Welcome. My name is Jeff Behrens. I will be serving as a Hearing Co-Chairperson. Thank you for attending the virtual component of the U.S. Highway 51, Stoughton to McFarland Public Hearing. The virtual component of this public hearing will end when all interested persons have provided testimony, or 8:00 p.m., whichever occurs first. We will be providing contact information throughout the virtual component of this public hearing, so please have paper and pen ready. Contact information is available on the study website and included in the public hearing packet, which is also posted on the study website. If you prefer not to, or are unable to view the virtual component of this public hearing through YouTube Live, you may use the listen-only line we have established for the virtual component of this public hearing by calling (888) 557-8511. After dialing, you will be prompted to enter an access code. The access code is (69) 69016, followed by the pound sign. To get the most accurate account of those participating in the virtual component of this public hearing, we ask that you send an email to the address shown on the screen, Please include your name, address, phone number, and if applicable, if you are representing yourself, someone else, or a group. Please note that the information provided, including names, addresses, phone numbers, and email addresses, is not confidential and may be subject to disclosure upon request pursuant to the requirements of the Wisconsin Open Records Law, Sections 19.31 through 19.39 of the Wisconsin statutes. Before proceeding further, I would like to note that court reporters from Verbatim Reporting Limited are here tonight, who are taking down these proceedings for the official public hearing record and will be recording your public and private verbal testimony. If you would like to obtain a copy of the transcript of this public hearing, you should make the request to Jeff Behrens, whose contact information is available on the study website. Materials presented tonight and other information to assist you in developing comments or testimony specific to the proposed project, including: public hearing exhibits, the public hearing packet, the environmental assessment, a narrated presentation, and project contact information, are available on the website or by request. The virtual component of this public hearing is being recorded for the official project record. The virtual component recording will be posted to the WISST YouTube channel, and a link will be included on the study website. If you are unable to access the study website and would like to attain a copy of specific portions of this virtual public hearing, please contact Jeff Behrens at (608) 245-2656. Two options are available tonight for you to provide verbal testimony. The first option is private verbal testimony. The second option is public verbal testimony through YouTube Live. If you choose to provide public verbal testimony, your testimony will be broadcast to virtual hearing participants. Both options will be recorded by a court reporter and entered into the official record. We will be using a callback process for you to provide either private verbal testimony or public verbal testimony through YouTube Live. Those wishing to provide private verbal testimony may do so at any time during the virtual component of this public hearing. For those wishing to provide public verbal testimony through YouTube Live, this opportunity will begin shortly after the project presentation. To get placed into the callback queue to provide testimony in either manner, please call (608) 261-8626, or send an email to jeffbberens@dot.wi.gov. Project staff will take your name, address, and a callback phone number. If we are experiencing high call volumes, a call taker may not immediately be available to take your information. Please hold on the line, and we will answer your call in the order received. If sending an email, please provide your name, address, callback number, and indicate whether you are interested in providing either private or public verbal testimony. Participants will be called back when it is your turn to provide either private or public verbal testimony based on the order in which the request was received. Please be patient when waiting for your callback. Each person providing either style of verbal testimony will be limited to three minutes. When you receive the callback, provide your name and address. You may also indicate if you are representing a business or organization. Then proceed with your testimony. Also, when you get your callback for either type of testimony, please turn off or mute the audio on your computer. There is up to a 15-second time-laid between your phone testimony and what is broadcast over YouTube Live coming back out of your computer audio, which will cause confusion for all parties. When providing private verbal testimony, the YouTube Live presentation audio coming through your speaker will make it difficult for the court reporter to understand your testimony. In addition to the verbal testimony options during this virtual public hearing, you may provide written testimony for the public hearing record via email to jeffbberens@dot.wi.gov, or by sending the comment form in the hearing handout packet, or a letter to WISST Project Manager Jeff Behrens at 2101 Wright Street, Madison, Wisconsin 53704. You may also call Jeff Behrens at (608) 245-2656, who will provide a written summary of your call for entry into the public hearing record. Written testimony will be accepted if it is postmarked by April 28, 2021. Verbal testimony will be accepted if received no later than April 28, 2021. This contact information can be found in the public hearing handout located on the project website. In addition, the contact information will be summarized again before we begin accepting public verbal YouTube Live testimony. There will also be another opportunity to hear about the project and present testimony during the in-person public hearing being held tomorrow from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Stoughton Wellness and Athletic Center, located at 2300 U.S. Highway 51, 138 in Stoughton. I will now proceed with reading the opening statement. The virtual public hearing component is being conducted on behalf of the Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration as part of the comprehensive consideration of the general location, design, and environmental aspects of the proposed improvement to United States Highway 51. The proposed improvement would include: reconstruction of two-lane U.S. Highway 51 east of Stoughton; reconstruction of U.S. Highway 51 through Stoughton; urban four-lane reconstruction and capacity expansion along the west side of Stoughton; reconstruction of rural two-lane U.S. Highway 51 between Stoughton and McFarland with intersection improvements; urban four-lane reconstruction in McFarland; pavement replacement between Larson Beach Road and Terminal Drive Vogus Road in McFarland. The objective of the public hearing is to provide full opportunity to express your opinions about the general location, design, and environmental aspects of the proposal. You may also present questions as part of your testimony for the department's and FHWA's consideration, as the total concept of the proposal is reviewed prior to arriving at a decision. If you have questions about any aspects of this proposal, you may call or email Jeff Behrens at (608) 245-2656, or jeffbberens@dot.wi.gov. I emphasize that this public hearing has the basic purpose of getting the most complete expression of public opinion and individual viewpoints on record, so that they can be considered with all other judgments and opinions to be reviewed by the department and FHWA before further decisions are made. We will now proceed with the project presentation. Following that, we will have the official notice of public hearing and other articles entered into the record. The court reporter will continue transcription during the project presentation. Thank you for participating in the public hearing process for the U.S. Highway 51, Stoughton to McFarland Corridor Study. The purpose of the public hearing is to request comments on the location, design, and environmental aspects of the improvements proposed in the preferred corridor alternative. We will share a general overview of the U.S. Highway 51 corridor and give a brief description of the study purpose and corridor needs. Next, the design aspects of the preferred alternative will be reviewed. Finally, the presentation will conclude with a review of the study schedule and the next steps for the project. The study limits begin at Interstate 3990 and extend west through the city of Stoughton, then north through the town of Dunn and the village of McFarland, to the U.S. Highway 12 and 18 Beltline in the city of Madison. The corridor is approximately 18.6 miles in length. The purpose of the project is to provide a safe and efficient transportation system in the U.S. Highway 51 corridor to serve present and long-term travel demand while minimizing disturbance to the environment. The corridor needs include: addressing safety (there are several areas on the corridor with crash rates higher than the statewide average for similar roadways); addressing the deteriorated pavement, which has reached the end of its useful life in many areas; addressing travel demand to improve mobility and reduce congestion, particularly during peak travel times; improving bicycle and pedestrian accommodations; and making sure that the improvements proposed are compatible with long-term planning in the corridor The environmental assessment documents the range of alternatives that were evaluated to address the corridor needs. The no-build alternative provides no improvements beyond routine maintenance on the roadway. Alternative A was a lower-build alternative that focused on replacing the deteriorated pavement in rural areas only. It also included making safety improvements at various intersections throughout the corridor. Alternative B was a capacity expansion alternative that included expanding U.S. Highway 51 to four lanes between Stoughton and McFarland, and a bypass around the north and east sides of the city of Stoughton. It also included the reconstruction of U.S. Highway 51 through the city of Stoughton and the village of McFarland. Alternative H is a combination of Alternatives A and B. It includes reconstructing the majority of U.S. Highway 51 throughout the 18-mile corridor. The no-build alternative does not address any of the corridor needs, but it has been retained to serve as a baseline to compare other alternatives against. Alternative A was dismissed from consideration because it did not address the corridor needs as well as the other build alternatives. Alternative B was dismissed from consideration for several reasons, including fiscal constraint, meaning that funding for the higher-cost improvements proposed in Alternative B would not be available within the planning horizon of the study; the greater environmental and property owner impacts over the other alternatives; and the majority of public comments received were opposed to Alternative B. Alternative H was determined to best address the corridor needs while taking into account the environmental impacts and projected costs. Alternative H has been identified as the preferred alternative for the corridor. This map provides a generalized summary of the improvements included in Alternative H. Please note that more detailed exhibits of the preferred alternative design can be found on the public involvement page of the study website. The rural section of U.S. Highway 51 east of Stoughton from Interstate 3990 to Spring Road will be reconstructed on the existing alignment. U.S. Highway 51 will remain a two-lane undivided highway in this area. However, a passing lane will be added in the eastbound direction between Tower Drive and Washington Road. Six-foot paved shoulders are proposed, which will accommodate bicycles. Through the downtown area of Stoughton, from Spring Road to Hole Avenue, U.S. Highway 51 will be reconstructed on the existing alignment, and sidewalk is proposed to be added where it does not currently exist. Bicycle accommodation varies throughout this section of the corridor. From Spring Road to the railroad tracks near the downtown area of Stoughton, bicycle lanes are included on U.S. Highway 51. West of the railroad tracks to Hole Avenue, a combination of on-street bicycle lanes, as well as signed off-road accommodations are proposed due to the limited highway right-of-way. The section of U.S. Highway 51 on the west side of Stoughton, from Hole Avenue to County Highway B East, will be reconstructed and expanded to a four-lane divided roadway. In addition, the U.S. Highway 51 and County Highway B East intersection will be converted to a roundabout. Sidewalk is proposed on both sides of U.S. Highway 51 in this area, and bicycles can be accommodated on the eight-foot paved shoulder. The Robey Road, State Highway 138, and Hole Avenue intersections with U.S. Highway 51 are also proposed to be converted to roundabouts. However, they are scheduled to be built as separate projects prior to the construction of the preferred alternative. The rural section of U.S. Highway 51 between Stoughton and McFarland, from County Highway B East to Exchange Street, will be reconstructed primarily on the existing alignment and will remain a two-lane roadway. Safety improvements include the addition of left- and right-turn lanes at intersections throughout this segment. Six-foot paved shoulders are proposed, which will accommodate bicycles. The U.S. Highway 51 and County Highway BAB intersection will be converted to a roundabout. However, that project is also scheduled to be built as a separate standalone project. The section of U.S. Highway 51 in the urban area of McFarland, from Exchange Street to Larson Beach Road, will be reconstructed on the existing alignment. In addition, the U.S. Highway 51 and Exchange Street intersection will be converted to a roundabout. Sidewalk is proposed on both sides of U.S. Highway 51 in the area. Bicycle paths are proposed within Babcock Park on the west side of U.S. Highway 51. The section of U.S. Highway 51 in the rural area of McFarland, from Larson Beach Road to Vogus Road, will have the pavement replaced. Six-foot paved shoulders are proposed, which will accommodate bicycles. The southbound bridge over Taylor Road and the railroad will be replaced, and auxiliary lanes will be added on both sides of U.S. Highway 51, from the Sigal Cow Road interchange to a location just south of Vogus Road. In addition, some type of intersection control, potentially roundabouts or traffic signals, will be included at the Sigal Cow Road interchange ramp terminals. As mentioned earlier, more detailed maps of the Alternative H design can be found on the public involvement page of the study website. This table shows the summary of anticipated construction costs and impacts for the preferred alternative, Alternative H. The southbound ramp at the U.S. Highway 51 and Sigal Cow Road interchange is currently experiencing safety and operational issues. The study team has investigated intersection control options to address these concerns. A preliminary analysis has determined that a roundabout or traffic signal are both operationally and practically feasible and will be retained for future analysis. Based on the preliminary safety and operational analysis, intersection control is only needed at the southbound ramp. However, it is possible that a roundabout or traffic signal could be added to the northbound ramp for interchange consistency and driver expectation. We welcome your comments regarding the type of intersection control at the U.S. Highway 51 and Sigal Cow Road interchange ramps. There are several separate standalone projects on the U.S. Highway 51 corridor programmed for construction within the next few years. The reason these projects were programmed outside of the U.S. Highway 51 study varies. The Robey Road and County B/County AB roundabout projects were removed from the study because they qualified for funding through the Highway Safety Improvement Program. The Highway 138 and Hole Avenue roundabouts were removed from the study so they could be constructed earlier due to the anticipated increase in traffic from development in the area. The U.S. Highway 51, Stoughton to McFarland, study is nearing completion. Comments or testimony received during the public hearing environmental assessment availability period will be incorporated into the final environmental assessment document. Public involvement opportunities and other milestones that have occurred during the environmental assessment phase of the study are shown on this slide. Feedback received during the public meetings has been reviewed and factored into the study decision-making process. Coordination was not limited to just the outreach shown here. Additional outreach and meetings were held to discuss topics of interest with resource agencies, municipalities, and other stakeholders. The Federal Highway Administration will issue a final determination for the project, which is anticipated to be a finding of no significant impact, in June 2021. This would complete the U.S. Highway 51, Stoughton to McFarland, study. For the purpose of final design and construction, the U.S. Highway 51 corridor is anticipated to be split into at least seven segments. Each segment will be a separate project with its own design and construction timeline. Timelines for individual projects are still being finalized. However, it is expected that final design for some projects will begin yet this spring, and construction of the first project will begin in 2025. Construction of the entire corridor is anticipated to be completed in 2029. Public involvement and outreach will continue during final design and construction for each project. Each project is anticipated to hold at least one public involvement meeting during final design to provide project updates and gather feedback. We encourage you to stay involved throughout the design and construction of the U.S. Highway 51 corridor. During construction, WISSTOT will work closely with local municipalities and project stakeholders to provide updates on construction progress and traffic staging. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate your interest in the U.S. Highway 51, Stoughton to McFarland Corridor Study. This concludes the presentation. I will now proceed with entering articles into the record. The court reporter will continue recording. In addition to the testimony provided at the virtual component of this public hearing, all exhibits, handouts, presentations, and displays for viewing during the virtual component of this public hearing will be included in the official public hearing record. Page 16 of the public hearing handout packet, found on the study website, contains a complete list of these materials. Other materials you wish to provide, along with other testimony received after the virtual component of this public hearing, and testimony received during and after the in-person component of this public hearing, will be added to the official public hearing record, provided they are received or postmarked prior to the end of the environmental document availability period on April 28, 2021. The environmental document for this project proposal has been made available to the public and is available on the website for your review. The project presentation given earlier serves as the extended version of the project statement. In addition, the detailed project statement is included in the hearing handout packet, which is available for review on the study website. The project statement has been read and transcribed into the record by the court reporter shortly before the beginning of the virtual public hearing. Next, we will begin taking public verbal testimony.
Welcome. My name is Jennifer Grimes. I will be serving as a Hearing Co-Chairperson. We will begin taking public verbal YouTube testimony shortly. As a reminder, there are two options available tonight for participants to provide verbal testimony, a public option and a private option. To get placed into the callback queue to provide testimony in either manner, please call (608) 261-8626, or send an email to jeffbberens@dot.wi.gov. A call taker will ask for your name, address, and a callback phone number. If we are experiencing high call volumes, a call taker may not immediately be available to take your information. Please hold on the line, and we will answer your call in the order received. If sending an email, please provide your name, address, callback number, and indicate whether you are interested in providing either private or public verbal testimony. Participants will be called back when it is your turn to provide either private or verbal public testimony based on the order in which the request was received. Please be patient when waiting for your callback. Each person providing either style of verbal testimony will be limited to three minutes. When you receive the callback, you will be prompted to state your name and address. You may also indicate if you are representing someone or a group. Then proceed with your testimony. It is important to also remember to turn off or mute the audio on your computer when it is your turn to provide testimony. Questions asked while participants are providing testimony will not be answered. Testimony will only be halted if the chairperson believes the project team needs additional clarification to understand the testimony being presented. We will now begin receiving YouTube Live public verbal testimony. When you are called, you will be prompted to state your name and address. Also, you may indicate if you are representing yourself, someone else, or a group if desired. We ask that you please limit your verbal testimony to three minutes. If you go beyond three minutes, I may interrupt you and ask you to call our call takers once more and indicate your desire for another callback to provide additional testimony. This will allow everyone an opportunity to present their testimony. Remember that you may also provide written testimony for the public hearing record via email to jeffbberens@dot.wi.gov, or by sending the comment form in the public hearing packet found on the study website, or a letter to WISST Project Manager Jeff Behrens at 2101 Wright Street, Madison, Wisconsin 53704. You may also provide additional verbal testimony by calling Jeff Behrens at (608) 245-2656, who will provide a written summary of your call for entry into the public hearing record. Written testimony will be accepted if it is postmarked no later than April 28, 2021. Verbal testimony will be accepted if received no later than April 28, 2021. We will move to the first person signed up for public testimony. Welcome. Please state your name, address, and if you are representing a group or business. Then proceed with providing testimony.
Hi. My name is Matt Shrenke, village administrator for the village of McFarland, representing the village at 5915 Milwaukee Street. I've been to several of these public hearings and meetings over the last, over a year now, and stated a number of different points of view from the village as far as the highway plans are concerned. Most of our, most of our initial reviews have not been very supportive of what's proposed. There's a number of aspects of this project that we feel are not consistent with interactions with our local roadways. We feel that it will do harm to our local businesses and interact negatively with our residents. Now, to date, we've been working more collaboratively with WISSTOT staff and their consultants to try to reach some resolution on these issues, but again, we have a lot of work to do. And the village board, representing the residents of McFarland, have gone on the record, have provided our letter stating that we do not approve of the design as is presently included within the environmental assessment. And unfortunately, do find that there is significant impacts that this project as proposed has on our community. It's unfortunate and disappointing that Federal Highway moved the project environmental assessment forward without fully considering that. Again, we've stated these points previously. I won't go into those details. However, we do look forward to trying to work through these issues. But again, until they are resolved, the village remains opposed to the plan as it's presently laid out. Thank you.
Thank you for providing testimony. We will now move to the next person signed up for public testimony. Welcome. Please state your name, address, and if you are representing a group or business. Then proceed with providing testimony.
Thank you. My name is Roger Springman. I live at 812 Creedham and Drive in Stoughton, and I am representing myself. So, for the last at least three years, I have consistently made comments about the danger of pedestrian bicycle crossings at roundabouts. I'm guessing most of the staff at DOT knows my name and knows my heartfelt, heartfelt interest in this topic. I've given testimony in numerous occasions. I have never been convinced that any roundabout that's placed in Stoughton in the area of KPW from 138 up to Town Line Road is going to be safe for pedestrian bicycle crossing. The area is very active. There's commercial properties on both sides. It's It's very atypical of most DOT roundabouts, which are usually way out in the country or way out by an interstate highway. I have not seen any plans yet to, to make those intersections safe or reasonable for the many older people that live in Stoughton. We have a high population of seniors. I'm one of them. I would be very hesitant to cross that roundabout to get from one side to the other in that vicinity, even though there's stores I use there a lot. I feel those are very inappropriate solutions for that area. If there's going to be roundabouts, which are only four in certain areas, and this is not one of them, they've got to be lit if you're going to have them, that is with a self-actuated lighting crossing system, or the DOT immediately must consider an overpass or underpass in that area. That's the only safe way seniors, and I said I'm one of them, and there's thousands of them in Stoughton, are going to go from one side to the other of that highway. Might I remind the DOT also that Doric Development is putting in a major development right by the Ace Hardware Store along Townline Road? That's going to dramatically change the traffic flow of both cars and people from one side of that road to the other. And I've yet to see that the DOT cares about that or has an alternative plan to get people safely from one side of the road to the other. So I'm adamantly opposed to the current plans for the roundabouts without at least considering an underpass or overpass in that area. It's the only way to get seniors and people, and people on bicycles, or people that are pregnant ladies with buggies or other kinds of devices from one side of that highway to the other. There's a lot of commercial enterprises there. We've got a brand-new over fifty-five development on one side. KPW two is going up right now as we speak. There'll be hundreds of more people on the south side of the road, and there's thousands of people on the north side of the road. This is an atypical environment for a roundabout, and the DOT must change how they address roundabouts inside urban areas. If there's any lesson to be learned here, the DOT must change the way they design roundabouts inside an urban area. And I'll stop my comments there. I've said this a lot of times, and I'm going to keep saying it. What you're doing is wrong. It's not right for that area. Thank you.
Thank you for providing testimony. We will now move to the next person signed up for public testimony, if we have one. Currently, no one else has signed up to provide verbal public testimony. We will wait a few minutes for those wishing to provide public testimony to call. Remember, there are two options available tonight for participants to provide verbal testimony: a public option and a private option. We will wait a few more minutes. please call six zero eight two six one eight six two six, or send an email to jefff.brens@dot.wi.gov. We are going to extend the public verbal testimony for another minute as we may have Welcome. Please state your name and address, and then proceed with providing public testimony.
Deborah Byrd, B-Y-R-D. My address is nine seventeen East Main Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin. Hello, everyone. I'm here today because recently I learned that in September of two thousand and fifteen, the Stoughton City Council voted in favor of a resolution to eliminate parking on Highway Fifty-One East in Stoughton, from the railroad tracks near downtown to Spring Road, outer east part of Stoughton, as part of the reconstruction project we're here tonight discussing. I oppose the elimination of our parking because we have very limited off-street and side-street parking options. Several of my neighbors also oppose the elimination of our parking. There's still time to encourage the city of Stoughton to reconsider their recommendations. I encourage anyone listening that also opposes the elimination of parking on Highway Fifty-One East to contact older person of District Two Phil at six zero eight two two five nine one zero eight, and older person Jean at six zero eight five seven two three four six nine, and Jeff Barons from the Department of Transportation at six zero eight two five, two four five, excuse me, two six five six. Thank you, everyone, for taking your precious time tonight to learn about some of the issues going forward with this project on Highway Fifty-One.
We are going to keep the line open for another five minutes if anyone else would like to call in for public verbal testimony. To get placed in the callback queue to provide testimony in either manner, please call six Currently, no one has signed up on the list to provide verbal public testimony. We will wait a few more moments for those wishing to provide any additional public We have completed our list of those wishing to provide public testimony, but we will wait one more minute for any additional persons waiting to provide public testimony.
...
Thank you for taking time to participate in the virtual component of this public hearing. Please remember additional written or verbal testimony you would like to become part of the public hearing record should be provided via email to jeffberens@dot.wi.gov or by sending the comment form or a letter to WISTDOT project manager Jeff Behrens at 2101 Wright Street, Madison, Wisconsin 73004. You may also call Jeff Behrens at 608-245-2656 who will provide a written summary of your call for entry into the public hearing record. Written testimony will be accepted if it is postmarked no later than April 28, 2021. Verbal testimony will be accepted if received no later than April 28, 2021. If you have questions or would like to discuss aspects of the project, please contact Jeff Behrens by phone, email, or mail. Contact information was previously read and is also included on the study website. If you have specific questions or would like to talk with project team members in person, please join us at the in-person component of this public hearing being held tomorrow from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Stoughton Wellness and Athletic Center located at 2300 U.S. 51 and 138 in Stoughton. Due to physical distancing requirements, capacity at the in-person public hearing component is limited. Due to capacity limits, the project team requests that individuals wishing to attend the in-person component make an appointment to attend. Appointments may be made by contacting Jeff Behrens at 608-245-2656. Attendees will be provided approximately 60 minutes to review materials and have in-person discussions with project team members. Appointments will be taken until noon tomorrow, April 21, 2021. The virtual component of this public hearing, including taking of public verbal YouTube live testimony, is now formally adjourned. Thank you.